Good morning, everyone. It is Friday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a meeting of the Oaks Public School Board being held on at the Oaks Central Office Conference Room. It's seven AM. I'm calling the meeting to order. Board members Day, Sire, Nagel, and Heimbach are present in the meeting room. I'm Board President Neil, joining remotely today. Welcome, visitors. Let's get to the agenda. We will stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do not confuse us.
I pledge allegiance to
the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as printed and posted. Nagel moves. Is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to make a couple changes to the agenda. On BB or on five B, pick up approved construction manager contract. We'll we'll deal with the next steps on that, the special meeting on the twenty-seventh. And then I but then I need to add back in a different thing of her BB, and that would be a resignation from approval of the resignation of this this whole.
All right. Is there a motion to amend the agenda as described by Superintendent Self? Nagel?
Hi, Look.
Heimbach moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Day seconds. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the agenda? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to amend the agenda by removing item B of under five, approved construction manager, and replace with approve or resignation of Ms. Hobel. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. We now have before us the amended agenda. Is there any discussion on the amended agenda? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes. The agenda is amended and accepted as amended. Welcome, all visitors and guests, staff, everyone who's present. Thank you for being with us today, whether you're joining in person or remotely. Is there any communication?
I I just want to make I'll make an announcement about the results of the referendum yesterday. So the unofficial results of the bond referendum are four hundred and ten yes and five hundred and fifty-eight no. This is forty-two percent yes and fifty-eight percent no. Sixty percent yes was required to pass the referendum. So by law, the board must meet thirteen thirteen days after the election to canvas the votes. So any absentee ballots received that were postmarked on or before March thirteenth must be counted at that time. So we have set a special meeting scheduled for March twenty-seventh at seven AM. Just want to say thank you to all of the stakeholders that took part in this process. We do understand the trust that our community has placed in the board and administration to continue to deal with our critical facility issues, and we, as a team, will continue to do all we can for the students of OPS. But just on a personal note, I'd like to say thank you to the board, to Shannon, to our administration, to our staff that took this challenge on. We knew it was going to be a heavy lift with our situation, and we spent some of us twelve to thirteen months working on this and just in awe of those that were brave and did what was right and did what they thought needed to be done for our school. And I know that we will continue to work together in order to make sure that we're doing the best for our school and the students that come to school here.
Thank you, and I echo Superintendent Self thanks to the board and administration and staff for all of the energy that has been put in in this effort, and we will not give up on our school and our community. We know that a right plan is out there for our community, and we will pursue it. So thank you all, and we'll move on. Just as a matter of course here, I will say that there was a little alarm that just went off in my room, and it quit, but I hope I don't have to evacuate, but if
Just have to run out to the beach or something. There was one more communication. There was a thank you card from the Miller family. Roxanne Miller, kind of our teachers, her husband Bob, his mother passed away, and so they sent a thank you for the gift.
All right, let's move on then to what we're all here for, student outcomes. Our progress monitoring domain this month is choice ready, so let's hear some reports on how our students are doing with choice ready.
Great. Mr. Dobitz will pull up the report, and we'll just start. Yeah. Okay, we'll pull up the document. So like you said, that this month is student outcome goal three, so we'll kind of start up at the, you know, from the the upper level, and then we'll work ourselves down on the top level. So our student outcome goal three is OPS will increase the percentage of students who graduate choice ready as measured by the North Dakota Choice Ready Report from seventy-six percent in spring twenty twenty-three to ninety-five percent in spring twenty twenty-eight. So our goal for twenty twenty-four is eighty percent, just just as a reminder of that. Our goal point one is the percentage of learners at OPS that obtain a score of thirty-one on the ASVAB increase from cent in twenty-three to ninety percent in spring twenty twenty-four, or in twenty twenty-eight, sorry. So you want to go to the next slide, Brian, sorry. When Jordan and Ed and I were working on this, it was and visiting about, this is a hard one for us to pick out a goal progress measure because there are so many working pieces, and you think you have one of those working pieces nailed down, and then it changes on you because the cohorts change, you know, obviously, so you're not following the same cohort. One year, you've got, you know, one group, and then the next year, you have the next group. So we don't know if we really have the best measures. You know, right now that we're using, this is where we're at, and we chose those, so we'll finish those for this year, but Ed, Jordan, and I are going to get together at the end of the year, and we're going to look at some stuff because we just want to make sure that we have the right measures. We identified ASVAB because that's where quite a few of our kids had missed the military ready, and so we thought, well, that's one thing. We've got the measure for it. We've got the tool. Let's use that. So you can see in last year's cohort, it was seventy-seven percent, but now this fall, this year's cohort is at eighty-three percent. So we've already exceeded our target. And there's possibility that the kids can retest. I mean, Ed's been working with them, and that's one of my things for what's next. He's encouraging those that scored lower than that thirty-one. I don't know if you remember that they adjusted that score. It was a percentage. Was it last year that it went to thirty-one, or is it this year, the first year that they changed that?
That was for the no, that was for the North Dakota State Scholarship.
Oh.
That one could be, that was like eighty-five down. And I think they've always kept it at thirty-one.
So the thirty-one that's on there, but he's and he's encouraging them to retake that test. And again, I talked about the GPMs, but we've already exceeded this on that, and you know, again, next year's cohort could be be totally different. So we'll look at this measure and see, but it's indicating that we're exceeding our target on that. So goal progress measure three, two. If you can go to the next one. Ding.
Careful, song, I may evacuate.
Oh, you're the percentage of sophomores that are choice ready in at least one indicator area will increase from eighty-four percent in spring twenty twenty-three to one hundred percent in spring twenty twenty-eight. I our focus is there more than it has been because we know that that's what we want our kids to do. So Mr. Lynch and Mr. Wentworth have worked have worked hard on this. They're looking at it. They're, you know, we're talking about it when we have conversations about this. So in the fall, seventy-seven percent of our sophomores were in the three areas. They were twice ready in one of those three areas, and I couldn't tell you which one they are. I'm sure those gentlemen could break that down for you. But in the winter, they were eighty-three percent of them were, and then we'll look at it again in the spring. See where we're at on that. So we've met, we've exceeded our target on this one, too. We have one more data check and report in May. And to be, okay, I'm going to be just totally transparent. I messed up on, if you look at our calendar for goal progress measuring, this month, we should have done reading again. But I was going one, two, three, one, two, three, and we'd already done one. We'd already done two, so we went to three. So we decided, Sue and I visited, and we decided to stick with goal progress measuring three this month. Next month, we'll do math and reading, and then we'll do goal progress again in May, number three. So I don't know if the numbers will change. They, we might have enough data choice ready. Again, we'll be having some more conversations on where we want to go next year, and we'll report back on that. So I think that that's all I have. You have questions on?
So on the three point one, is that sophomores as well, Anna, or is that a difference?
Those are juniors, correct? Ed, now it's moved to juniors. Yeah. Yeah, it used to be sophomores that took ASVAB or anything, but my kids were sophomores, but now it's a junior.
It, there's some schools in the area that have sophomores take it. We have juniors, and we usually have everybody, usually everyone takes it. And then it's getting the military back in to to do the ASVAB again, needing three or four people. Otherwise, as a senior, they could take the ASVAB with the junior class cohort and redo it that and redo it that way.
So I mean, maybe that's maybe this is a good segue. So, you know, it started at the thirty thousand foot level, so maybe now I'll pass it down to those two guys because they have some information that they want to share with you that digs a little deeper, help you understand the choice ready. And then Jordan's also going to share, we took some teachers with us when we went out to Bismarck, visit the Career Academy. That fits perfectly under that this month. They weren't able to be here. Ryan is at the state tournament, which my sign on ED yesterday. And Jess has little kids, so she wasn't able to come this morning. So I will hand off to you two gentlemen.
So the handout that I gave you guys, it's the in the tenth grade, I went through this, here's tenth graders, and I just looked at the indicators of like how many they would, if they hit one of the three pathways or two of the three or three of the three. And so the percentages broke down as thirty-two out of thirty-six students had at least one indicator taken care of, which was which came up to eighty-eight percent. And then sixteen of the thirty-six had two indicators. So usually the first indicator was the was the workforce, right? One, a lot of our students are take center classes, and with those center classes, with print center classes, they automatically have that done. Because out at the center, they also do the the CRs of practices each semester. So that that's one of the nice things that they're able, that the center does for take care of the workforce. Then sixteen out of thirty-six were in that for forty-four percent for two of them, and then nine nine out of the thirty-six actually had three indicators. John, the only thing is they haven't taken the ASVAB, so they just need to score a thirty-one or higher on that. They would be, and so next fall, when they take the ASVAB, if if they were to graduate, they act like nine of them would have been choice ready by the time they take that. So it gives you a good idea as to kind of where they might go. I mean, the hardest part of measuring this is that you a kid could happen ISS or OSS, and then they're out. You know, so like they could be choice ready all the way up until the last week of school. If I get an ISS for fighting and or or a alcohol or substance issue, and they're no longer choice ready. So I mean, that's the hard part of like figuring out and tracking it. The eleventh grade, they're gonna, it's the same for the ASVAB as what I previously explained to the board. It to, I haven't been able to take it. I haven't gotten the juniors back in to retake it, so I'm looking at in the fall when the juniors next year take it, those seniors can retake it. And then one thing that came up is they made a, this is this choice ready. He is a living document, and it really changes quite a bit because there is a, there's a couple of changes that they made to it in January and February. And so one of them was just for for schools that have ten graduates or less, they didn't use it yet. And so they were, so they got dinged for it. This really isn't going to affect the Oaks Public Schools. But it was something that affected a couple of schools in the state of America. And there's the dual credit in the post-secondary. They had it as a math or an English dual credit, and they switched it to just being dual credit, the same as it would be for the workforce. If that'll help some of our students be post-secondary, that might not have been before. By getting, by having one of those indicators mess that way. And then they added a multicultural awareness, used to the brainwaves. So I know I got a couple of questions on that from you guys, and it is they're still going through trying to figure out what all of those mean. They they make it open as much as possible so that we so that schools have the autonomy to figure out what they want to do and and how they want to assess it. And so it's one of those pieces where we're slowly figuring out what that. And so over the next year or two, we'll figure out that piece. It's nice that they're given one more indicator in the essential skills. Could be a, like, it could be an easy way for us to make sure that students, all students would have that indicator marked out, like the career exploration that's in there. We do that just by freshman, you're going to be part of a career expo that's taken care of with that indicator, like the multicultural, if we went to a multicultural event that had the each year for one of the classes, that would take care of as well. So it's, it'll be interesting to see where that goes as we move on. So that's kind of what I have. I also have in front of you guys VR headsets. It's one of the things that last year there were choice ready grants, and SRCTC was able to purchase three of the VR headsets or through that grant. And so it allows students to be able to do job shadows without having to go and then we also have two from the school has two that were given to us at midwinter conference. The the school counselors, state conference, where every school district got a VR headset, and so the elementary got a headset and the high school got that. And so do you want to try it and see what it looks like?
We're here and all.
Okay, so I hopefully have it all set up in there. It might, it might be a little odd. You, what you need to do is you just put it onto your head. Put your head in there first, and then, oh.
Well, I kind of failed it sometimes.
Oh, here.
Oh, there it is.
There you go. Yep. You can change, you can change it around how you want to. You, hopefully, you should just see like a view viewport. Here, I'll give you your little your little, here you go. Here's another one for you. All right. And so you should be able to see on there. If you move the 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 controllers around, they're asking you to hit a button on there to get them activated, and then it should, everybody should be at like the careers where you can scroll on the trackpad. Is that, is that where you guys are? Of course. And so, yep. And so they should have all, the hard part is they they are able to be casted onto the screen. So we can see exactly what the person that's VR headset would have, would be seen. I didn't want to do that now because it would be a little odd, but it's, the hard part is I don't, I can't see what everybody else.
Well, so mine says for us, one of the volume buttons on the very controllers. Now.
Here, can I borrow this for a second? No.
Can you see something?
Yeah, so that's like this dart a bit.
But I just have a laser and just
Yep, so the laser, that is what's
Zanya, you're missing out. So am I.
Yeah, so, okay, there we go. Yeah, so.
It's your bifocal, sit your head back. He's busy with mine. Yeah, that's right.
So if you have the store, and if you look on the SD part on the far left, you should be able to click on that and use it. And it should work that way, because I had it set up for those. But here we go. Oh, there we go. All right.
Which side are we now through today?
All right, well. You see all those?
I'm on a spaceship.
Freaking out, doesn't it? So one, and it shows a video. Can I go? Let's see where you are. Oh. So this is a little better, so now it, now you're
How'd you do that?
Hit the SD part, so then hit one adults. Right, can I check? See where you are? Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, can I borrow this? So then you can take the tracker out and scroll down and catch them. Oh, here we go.
How'd you do that?
I put that SD part, and then it's, it's all right. And then you can just scroll on the trackpad. So on the left hand side, if you look at the SD part.
It was right there.
But it doesn't want to go? Yeah. Nope, that worked. Okay, I'm sorry. So it's kind of cool, isn't it?
Mine's working.
But it's really cool how you they have wind towers, the wind turbine, so you can actually go up inside it. And you really have to see this. And so it's kind, it's really cool on the drones and stuff like that where you get to go all over the place.
They have a plumber, Brian.
Yeah. So anyways, it's one of the pretty easy ways that kids can get a job shadow very quickly. There's sixty-six different careers paths that they have, and they're going to be adding more each year. And so it's, it's really simple and easy with the micro SD chip to keep all the video in there. Doesn't have to be hooked up to the internet, and we can actually screencast it onto the screen where the kids can actually see what they're, what you're looking at. You're going through it. And so it's a good way to get an idea as to what kind of careers are available without having to go and track. That's all I
combining with, so with the teachers, myself and Mrs. Self, we went to the Empower Ed School of Bismarck. So each student, they would kind of have like homeschool letters, VHS, CHS, whatever it's going to be. But then it could be for a period or kind of a block of a couple of years, they could go to some power ed. And there, they were kind of given a scope of different standards, right? Hey, here's a list of standards that you got to get through the semester. You just need to show your proficiency in those by the end and remember credit. So a lot of them, they tied it to like what their career paths would be. So let's say it's automotive, they would do, find a way to combine the standards that they needed to cover, whether it was ELA or social studies standard, and combine it to their mechanic. They were doing, so like some kids that were motive, and they're like the aviation even, where there was a student there that had their aviation. Their license or pilot license, the commercial plane around the area that they were able to do through this, like they were able to practice their aviation and tie to the standards, and have like a little report made up about what they did. There's a student that did a presentation on a rocket that they built that they had to house an egg, and they need to explain the process of what they did and how they did it. Okay, well, that met the ELA standards, and then it also met some other science standards that they were doing. And so when they shot it up, I mean, they they showed me the video, and the egg didn't, didn't make it at the end, but they're like, okay, now we have to reflect on what we did here. So it was the students kind of getting what they wanted. You need to cover and show the educators there. The educators that we talked to said, it was just to see how creative these students are. So let's say, when you do your typical paper, where like, okay, I need to do this English paper. Well, I also have to do this social studies paper. They were able to combine the two and meet the standard, both within that one really good paper compared to write it one paper for each session there. And then others would just, like I said, able to tie it to like the mechanics, aviation, A. There was one student that even said like he has the opportunity to go out and work in these mechanic shops more, and he gets offered jobs all the time, like, hey, you can work for me. I'll give you this much money. And he said, well, thank you very much, but somebody else can actually offer me more that he can go and work for them. So like, this is a senior in high school that's already getting sought after for some of these jobs, and I think for some of our students, something similar to this, I mean, I figure out how to make it work, but more opportunities for our students to be interested in, let's say, a career. Like, you already, they already know, let's say, some of them are going to be that'll be in on the farm already, like, okay, how can we help you within like our academic environment that suits the needs for you to transfer that down the road? So that was just neat to see in that, the way that they could tie in their learning along with like their career interests out there. So Bismarck, you know, have people resources and options than we do, but it's just ideas that we can take and bring back here, hopefully, find our kids and help them be successful and give them what they need.
So the teachers wrote up something for you, just so you can read that. I didn't get it in the package. I just got it from, but they this, I mean, when we went out there, I don't think we knew what to expect, right? We'd heard about Empower, but they Empower Ed, it's not the Empower. And then when we went in there, it was fascinating and asking those kids questions because they could totally advocate for themselves. They had choice, voice. The one young lady we talked to said she was about Um the one young lady we talked to said she was about ready to drop out of school at one of the high schools in Bismarck. She's great welder, I guess she has competed at the national. And she advocated herself and said, I don't want to go to school there anymore. I mean, they're gonna drop out or I'm gonna come here. It's just juniors and seniors that can go there. So she had already gotten a lot of her basic classes done. She said she wasn't doing well, she was filling her classes and she was sitting there independently working and choosing what she wanted to do. But like Jordan said, you know, it's that understanding of standards is we're moving the standards that those can totally cross translate in between subjects. So it's no longer isolating, you know, the social studies in English. She could put those together because the standards TE is already doing that. They've been doing competencies for years. They've been the leaders in that area and, you know, taking those competencies and instead having the kids write three different papers. They write one paper, one good paper, and then it covers a bunch of the different standards. Just take a different mindset, totally, we're gonna do, and stay focused on the kids and they like. Or, you know, uh content or whatever that they have, focus on what was best for the kids and let the kids drive it. And I think the central one, they're totally open to this because we've talked to Randall and we. Doing some things with this as we move forward, you know, looking for the right, the correct staff or who we need to put in place or if they've got options and working together with them. Because our focus is really those kids, the option and to be as flexible as we possibly can. Because we're seeing it more and more, right? Like you said, that child already had had how many job offers. And he's a senior in high school and.
And one thing with like the flexibility of the two of stuff, like they said, like, we don't accept everyone. Some people can start here and then like, hey, this isn't for you. It's like a lot of it's like independently driven with those kids where um you're given that list of standards, but if you're not meeting those or if you're not doing what you're supposed to, then uh that program's just not for them. So a lot of them like it's it's a lot of responsibility, more responsibility for them to do what they need to do to show that they're learning these things. So that was one kind of question going into it's like, well, it's like what students is this target here? It's like, well, it's it's the ones that are independently driven, that they know what they want and how they can show they're learning it. Yeah, it was just it was just so fascinating to see like where that they find everything and um. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sorry.
Um so just to be clear, this is not um an alternative to graduating from high school. It is a different path to graduation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And are is Oaks Public Schools qualified to um pursue that? To have our students pursue that path? Or is there some sort of a waiver or a plan or something that we would need to put in place if we wanted to implement something like this?
Um I know I've talked with Mr. One with a little bit about this uh Anna and uh. It's it's something that we can do, which we just need to figure out the staffing piece of it there. Um so that's just like the only issue that we've brought into really um with it. And then uh trying to find a way to fit into that schedule along with that too. So it's it's not with. It's not out of reach, but we just got to make sure we have um everything covered before we were to have this option for some providers.
And the waiver that we already have in place, would we, you know, would be able to use that waiver? We can just go in and amend that, you know, and update it. And that that's the great thing about having that waiver is we're able to do these things, so.
And so the the target audience of students would be those that might be at risk of not graduating? Is that a fair statement?
It could be either or. I mean, it just so happened to be that uh the one student that presented us quite a bit, like she was the one that was talking about dropping out. Where you had others that were in there that um they were some of their honors kids. So like it's it's a wide variety where it just comes down to kind of like the student and um either their interests and their kind of independence there. Are are they able to advocate for themselves? Are they able to kind of keep on pace for themselves? And that responsibility of it um came into a factor where like, yep, some kids, this just wasn't for them. So then they couldn't get out here. They needed to have that structure of the regular classroom environment to be successful.
Yeah, I know, I just appreciate all the work you guys have been doing for this and. I I just feel really lucky for our students that we have you there, especially on stuff.
And like, I know I asked Sonia this uh when we were doing our TLA group and it was just like, what? Like, how do you measure student success? And that that was a question that I asked, and I don't know if I asked anybody else that was on the board at that time. But it's like, how do you measure it? Like, is it strictly just like the test? Is it their success after school? Is it their success during school? Is it their career? So how do you determine the student's success? And I mean, if if it's them leaving these doors and being well-rounded people in whatever career that they are, right? Something like this, I think, would just help them there. It it just kind of thaves that path, so.
Does anybody else have any other questions about what the our goal three and all that is involved in the goal three?
Thank you.
Hey, this this is Neil.
Okay, thank you. Um that completes our section two, student outcome goals and guardrails. We'll move on to section three, the consent agenda. Um I I would entertain a motion to uh approve and receive all the items as designated on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Nagel.
Nagel moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Okay.
Sire, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Um can we just highlight under um letter E there approving the Shaw resignation? And that is for the junior high um high or junior high football coaching position and is not his teaching position.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Uh just quickly, I'll read through the items. It's the approval of the February ninth minutes, the January financial reports and bills, treble teaching resignation, Shaw coaching resignation. Uh approving a negotiated agreement amendment, um approving the audit report. Approving the March seventh special board meeting minutes and the Van Persim teaching resignation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes and the consent agenda items are approved or received. Uh in your packet, item four were reports from the business manager, the superintendent. And Southeast Region Career Tech Center minutes, Cheyenne Valley Special Education Meeting Update. And the February Board Meeting Time Tracker. Now, those were for your information only. Next, we'll move on to items for discussion and possible action. We do have to act on the superintendent's evaluation, which was in your packet. Um all of you had an opportunity to review it uh for accuracy as I compiled it. And uh review the comments and the ratings. Nobody notified me that there was any uh that that. E- everyone acknowledged that it reflected their um ratings. And I did ask you all to make at least be prepared to make at least one comment. Something that surprised you, something uh that you'd like to highlight, whether it be about the evaluation and comments itself or about the process. Um I would note that all board members rated Mrs. Self satisfactory in all performance area areas. And uh one thing I'd like to highlight is that this is the first time that I have faithfully kept of a uh uh record after each board meeting. Usually shortly after each board meeting to uh make a note of some things that I wanted to remember. And I was surprised at how I I discovered things on my notes as I reviewed them, uh things that I would not have remembered had I not noted them shortly after the meeting. So oddly enough, it's a good practice. Who else would like to share something uh about the evaluation or the process?
I just wanted to say that, you know, we are in the process of redoing this um. Evaluation model. Um this to me is a very subjective. And there's a lot of room, it's hard to measure a lot of the items on here. It's more opinion-based than actually having a way to measure. So I've always struggled with the evaluation because.
Thank you. Anyone else have comment?
I just commend Superintendent Zell with her relationship with not only the board, but administration and our and our teachers and staff. And I just think she's done a phenomenal job of uh communication and. I mean, the board is is notified of everything and. Her respectful and professional behavior. Girl mindset, respect. What is?
Thank you. Other comments? Other comments? If not, um I would just I will make one comment that I I think we have an excellent administrative team in the district. And I hope that we can uh retain them for years to come. I think the future of our district depends upon strong leadership and we have it in place, so let's keep them together. Um is there a motion, which I probably should have asked for before? But is there a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation as satisfactory in all areas?
I'm left.
I'm but moves to approve the superintendent evaluation as satisfactory in all performance areas. Is there a second?
A.
Day seconds, thank you for that. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Uh, I'm back. Yes, sire.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Um thank you, Mrs. Self, for your continued strong leadership and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the months and years to come. Uh we'll move on to item B on the amended agenda, which is uh approving the hobo resignation. Is there a motion to approve the hobo resignation? Teaching contract resignation, correct?
Yes, yes.
Is there a motion?
Nagel.
Nagel moves to approve the hobo teaching resignation. Is there a second?
Second.
Sire, seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Oh, please call the roll.
Sire.
Yes.
I'm back.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Um not to put anybody on the spot, but um I guess this would uh be a timely time. To bring everyone up to date on where we are with teacher contracts. I believe today at four o'clock is the deadline uh for having signed contracts returned or resigning. Where are we at with those?
Um.
We are waiting on one, two, three, four. We're waiting on four.
Okay.
Overall, not just in.
Or over.
Or overall.
Okay, thank you.
If we don't receive those by four o'clock this afternoon, we're gonna open those up inside. And then we'll get rolling right away on getting out there and trying to um re, you know, recruit people to fill those positions.
All right. Okay, so uh that concludes the action items. Uh future meetings, we do have a special meeting scheduled as by law. We must meet thirteen days after the election to canvas the election, which involves counting the um any absentee ballots that come in. Um and certifying the official results of the election. In addition to that, um we will then be approving teacher contracts and any other resignations, I presume, that come in by that time. Um and I suspect we may be adding next steps on to that agenda on March twenty-seventh. Would that be correct?
Yes, I and that's what I expect.
Okay. Beyond that, uh we I believe we have a be legendary board training meeting scheduled now for April first. At five thirty. And remind me what that will entail. Is it theory of action?
Theory of action and board guardrails.
Okay, sounds fun. And uh then we'll have our regular meeting the third Friday of April at seven AM and the third Friday of May at seven AM. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Anything else? Anything else? Hearing nothing, I will uh declare this meeting adjourned at seven forty-five AM. Everyone have a good rest of your day and a great weekend.